Good morning, everyone. It's nice to see a full house here today. We thank you all for being here. This is the regular meeting of the Taos County Board of Commissioners. Today is Thursday, October 5th, 2017. It's now 9:00 a.m. This is a record. We're starting a meeting on time. I think other than one other special meeting, this may be the second time we did that. But I hereby call this meeting to order. Clear call and roll.
Chairman Penbro.
Present.
Vice Chair Geico.
Present.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present. Everyone, would please stand and face the flag. A.J., would you leave us? He pledged to leave us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, full of liberty and justice for all. Everyone, would please remain standing. And I'd like to, at this time, have a moment of silence, both for the people that have had their homeland completely ravaged by hurricane in Puerto Rico, and I'd also like to have all of us think about the 58 people that lost their lives senselessly in the Thank you all. Commissioners, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that with discussion.
Yeah, the motion and the second and discussion on the approval of the agenda. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move to postpone item 13, the executive session, because we do not have a full board present, and I would like to postpone that to the next meeting.
I believe that's time-sensitive. We're not going to have a full board at the next meeting. I will be in a multi-line retreat on the 17th meeting fire.
Well, we need to remember, make a motion that we hand the agenda to postpone this executive session until our first meeting. So that we have a full board for this discussion.
Okay, so with the motion, it is to postpone to a specific date. Item 13. Commissioners?
It would be out of respect for our fellow commissioner who is not present today.
Commissioner Romero is ill. He woke up ill this morning and is seeking care, so he will not be joining us today. So... Do I hear any support of Commissioner O'Donnell's motion? Hearing none, then I go with the original motion of approving the agenda as presented. Clear call and roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geico?
Yes.
Chairman Penbro?
Yes. Okay, next item is awards and recognition. First item will be a presentation honoring River Martinez, son of Anthony Martinez, who was one of our county assessor's employees. This is to honor River for his actions performed during a house fire. This is going to be... Mr. Martinez would like to address the people in the audience at this time. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this time. I tried to get a prepared statement, but it has some technical difficulties, so I'm just going to speak from the heart. On June 14th, there was a very catastrophic life event that impacted my family here that I am still recovering from myself, and I just look at you guys as so uninspirational. That major life event was a house fire that suddenly occurred when these guys were having an awesome visit with their mother up in Durango, Colorado. It was the second to last night of their two-week visit there. They had a great time, and it was right before the week... The week before, we were about to go on our summer vacation. These guys' mom, from what she sent me, and yeah, I sent some pictures to share. There's a... That picture right there is an actual picture of the fire that happened from a neighbor that had to be evacuated. So basically, on June 14th, about 1:40 a.m. in the morning, these guys were awakened to smoke, and I can not really, to this day, imagine how horrible that experience must have been for these guys involved. But in the heat of the moment, my son here, Rivers, he rose to the occasion and he helped his mom help get my little Ira out of the house and walk himself. And, you know, basically, they woke up to smoke, and they had to... You know, they easily could have been panicked, and they could have went the wrong way, but because of Rivers being so strong, individual that he is, he stayed cool, calm, and collected. And when his mother realized that they couldn't exit out the hallway, or the bedroom door, because you don't leave your room in this room, and they had to come to a realization that they had to come out the bedroom window of this house fire. Rivers got out first, and his mom put his little brother here, Ira, out second, and Rivers assisted with keeping the, you know, the heat of the moment when everything was really scary and sad. He stayed strong, cool, calm, and collected. He had to assist... I guess, sorry. So basically, as they got out of this bedroom, the fire escape had been removed from this property about six months earlier, so they didn't really have a defined path of escape from this fire. They were stuck between an inferno and a hillside wall, and there was sheer panic from what their mom shared with me about how the situation went. And Rivers, he rose to the occasion and kept everything cool, calm, and collective, and helped get Ira to understand that they had to go up the hillside and still through safe brush, rock, and stickers. As they were exiting away from the inferno, an explosion occurred where Rivers realized that, as the flames hit the ground and the trees around them started burning, that he put it out with dirt, and he just kept helping to get away from this fire. And I just, as a father, I look at my son here, and I just admire what he did during that crazy situation. And it didn't stop there. As they finally got away from the fire and they got to a street, the first responder was a police officer that came across them, and they got him into a car to put him in safety, and the first time to assess the situation. And that became another sticky situation for his mom, where she could smell the smoke and felt like the fire was coming up, too. And he realized that she was not feeling very secure in the situation, so he got the attention of the officer to open the door and let him out so they could be okay. So, all in all, I admire Rivers' bravery for what he did for him being in such a catastrophic fire. As you can see, that's the aftermath, and that he was able to be strong and help his mom and his brother get to safety. And for that, I'm so proud of you, Rivers. Just to share with Rivers, you're surprised at your being a warrior for your bravery. It was hard to keep this a surprise, and then we were down here, I thought, maybe I should let him know what's going on. So I asked him, I said, "You want me to let you know what's going on today, or you want me to keep it a surprise?" And he said, "I would like to keep it a surprise." So here's your thing.
Well, I want to tell you one thing, Rivers. You've got to get on a word that's very essential in being a firefighter, and that word is strong. Another one is brave. You did both. You exhibited what we teach people in fire safety classes, to know two ways out. Couldn't go your primary way, you found a second way. That's what we teach in fire safety. The other thing is, we teach people, once you get out, you stay out. You got to a safe spot. You did everything right, by what we teach in fire safety classes. Bobby is taught, Hundreds, Mikey, Chief. I mean, that's why we teach those classes. And I want to tell you, you did everything exactly right. You did it well. To be strong, you've got to be able to do something that makes you stronger. And I wore one of these for over 35 years, and I miss it every day since I don't have one. Today, our chief presents you with your own helmet. May you never have to use it, and when you get old enough, you're on the right track to the best job that ever is. Sorry to run into enforcement, but...[731.13][731.13](Laughter). This is a real job. Mikey, so Rivers, thank you for doing what you did, okay? And honor your bravery and sacrifice to your family. Today, you are a honorary member of the Taos County Fire and EMS Fire Department.[750.13][750.13](Applause). Thank you.
Thank you. And I like to end with just... I like to say thank you to all the first responders out in the world, as you brought up all the tragedies that are experienced. I just want to say thank you for all of the men and women that serve as first responders, as well as the men and women that work in hospitals. I am so forever grateful for the work that was done for my children at Children's Hospital in Denver, Colorado, and just as a reminder to all the men and women out there that are dealing with tragedy, I am grateful.
Next, we have the Taos Middle School Governor Class, Mr. Jacky Graham's class. They're going to be here for part or most of our meeting, just to see how things go. And I don't know, Jack, if you want to say anything, and what they're going to be doing the rest of the day, and stuff, but we're glad you guys are all here.
This is the council's supposed to be government. These are some ideas for our middle school, and they've been... You guys know, they write a proposal, and they give it to our vice principal and principal, and at that point, we have to go through to get what they want. A lot of times, it's going back and forth. You have to... But I would say, probably my type doesn't agree with what they want. They wanted to actually come and see how it's in the good world, so get their idea.
Very good. One thing I want you to know is, all of us here, and I said Commissioner O'Donnell is not here today, we don't have to always agree on everything. We don't have to like each other, but we have to work together. And the common goal that we all five work for is to better the Taos County each and every day, not just our Penasco district, not just Tauski Valley, not just the northern part, not just the central part. We work for all of Taos County every day, and all of our action should be this. Actually, I ask you to look over here on the wall. This commission passed the first-ever code of ethics of the elected officials in this commission, and we're bound to that, and we should follow that each and every day, that we act as commissioners. And that's something that was very important to this commission. We all five agreed to it, we all five signed it, and it's throughout the building. So if you walk around the building today and check things out, you'll see those. As a reminder, it was our pledge to our employees that we'll work ethically through our jobs as commissioners. But we really want to thank you guys for being here.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. O'Donnell.
I wanted to say thank you. How many of you might consider going into government or becoming an elected official when you get older?
After today, there'll probably be none.[968.41][968.41](Laughter).
I just want to encourage you, because we need young leaders like you to step in. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, it's not on the agenda, but I personally would like to recognize an individual in our staff that's here that just recently received a certification. He's our E-911 Director. Dominic, would you please stand? Dominic just completed the three-and-a-half-week certification.[1001.41][1001.41](Applause). He's in the Mexico Law Enforcement Academy, and he does a really good job with his staff over there, and that's the first line of defense, is our dispatchers. Whenever anything happens, what happened in Vegas, what happened in any place, whether it be a wreck, a fire, or anything like that, it starts with his shot, and we appreciate what he and his staff does for us.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just mention, thanks to his great staff, I think he was the top of his class. He'd been training for many years prior with his staff helping him, and he was pretty much top of his class, so congratulations on your...
I applaud you, Chief. Thank you, Dominic. Thank you, Dominic. All right, next item is item six, citizens concerned. Any citizen wishing to address the commission today and do so for five minutes or less? Providing your last name, gentleman, start with Monse Lata. Hi, Dennis.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, county manager, chairman. I stand before you today and will not take the full five minutes, I don't believe. However, as Jim knows, I'm never a loss holder.
He's an attorney, so he knows how to talk.
Well, and...
Sorry to see you.
As a former county attorney for Taos County, and town attorney as well when you were in the fire department, we go back a long way. But I'm here to, number one, thank the county, so Mr. Hugdio, for allowing the Taos Mountain Balloon Rally to again use the facilities the county has available for us. And I'd like to invite all of the commissioners to make sure that you mark on your calendars at the end of this month, the 27th, 28th, 29th of October, is going to be the Taos Mountain Balloon Rally. And it will be held again right here on the field next door, and we start on Friday with the tethering for the young people, grades one through five. I had an opportunity that morning. I understand that it's a free day from school. I think there's parent-teacher going on, and so students will not necessarily be in school, and they have the opportunity to come down and experience the hot air balloon rally. Not a ride, but just a tethering, to actually get up into the air. Then Saturday and Sunday will be the full-blown event along on Saturday night with the balloon globe that we always try to have. And again, all events are weather permitting, but we do encourage you to come. And should anybody from the county, or anybody who's in the audience or listening, want to have a float or vehicle in our parade, on Saturday, the 28th, we have a parade. We're currently getting the final approvals from the transportation department to close the street here. We actually leave from right here on Albright, go up the main drag to Kit Carson Park, and we end up there. And so we encourage people to join us with the parade and just have a good time. This is a small invitational balloon rally. Unlike the Albuquerque International Balloon Rally, which begins this week, which is huge and nasty, this is by invitation only, and we have 30 balloons that are coming up. And this gives everybody an opportunity to become very familiar with and spend quality time with the individual balloonists and/or crews, and/or join a crew or help out with the activities. We're always looking for volunteers to help put this on as well. So again, we thank you, and we look forward to seeing you on the field, probably dressed warmly, because we do start early in the morning.
Can you get Commissioner O'Donnell right on Saturday?
We can certainly do that.
She's bashful, she wasn't going to ask, but...
If she will be there on time, I...[1244.23][1244.23](Laughter). I feel certain we can get her, as well as almost anybody that goes out and hangs around long enough, but usually gets, again, weather permitting.
And thank all your volunteers that do what they do to make this a reality every year, because no one gets paid, everything is all volunteer on this event. Thank them for all the work.
I shall do that. If I could take one additional minute on a different topic. As you may or may not know, I am the instructor for the AARP Senior Driving Course, and I offer that course once a month. The next course coming up, if you're 50 and older, by state law, you are entitled to a discount on your auto insurance if you complete the course. The next course is going to be on October 24th, and I certainly encourage anybody 50 and above to sign up for the course. It's a great opportunity. You don't have to be an AARP member to take the course, and it does normally give you a discount for up to three years. The certificate is good for us for three years, again, depending on your particular driving. So we invite everybody to join us for that as well. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? If you would come up and state your name for the records, would the person that's ahead?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Jesse Moya. I'm a reporter of Taos news, but I'm also a newcomer to Taos, and with that, I walk around the town at night and the day. You guys probably seen me doing random stories and whatnot, but anyways, here's a little bit of a trash problem, plus a little bit of a soap, and I don't even infringe on anybody's schedules, but this Saturday at 9:00 a.m., I'm going to be out there with a couple of trash bags, gloves, bottles of water, and hopefully more with myself, with other volunteers. Like to invite you and any women in the audience who wishes to join, totally volunteer. I'm not going to look down at you or diss you if you don't make it. I did this when I lived in Deming, Las Cruces, Los Limas. I just take time with the town.
Where's the meeting?
We're going to be meeting at the Dollar Street parking lot, and we're going to be going south between Walgreens and Walmart, that area. No particular reason, it's just I live around that area, and that's where I see a lot of trash going through. And again, I'd like to invite anybody who wants to be there at 9:00 Saturday morning. Don't want to infringe on anybody's schedules, not to poke fun at anybody, not to say, "Hey, if you don't make it, you're not cool," whatever. Yeah, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Mr. Moya. I think our chairman will be very interested in being there.[1419.01][1419.01](Laughter).
Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Morning, thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Steve Fox, I'm with the Smoke Group Co., Interfaith and Intercultural Alliance, and we sent you guys a proposal, a proposed proclamation about changing Columbus Day just simply vocally to Indigenous Peoples' Day. When I came in today, Commissioner O'Donnell explained to me that last year you guys had dealt with that and decided to make it Fall Day because of opposition. I understand that. I understand that the Knights of Columbus, for instance, is a longstanding, strong organization within the Catholic Church. But I would just also add that, of course, our town and our county take their name from the pueblo. Nobody would be here of all the different groups, were it not for the pueblo having established what now is called a United Nations, UNESCO, World Heritage Site. And since the consensus of scholars has been that Columbus was typical for his time in treating the indigenous people as scum, basically, and that their numbers were cut way below half after only about 10 years, maybe there's a compromise. Maybe someday we can consider throwing a collective weight behind calling it Columbus and Indigenous Peoples' Day, especially since Northern Mexico is known as Indian country all over the country. I think we need to think about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing them, we will continue to thank you all for the sub minutes, the announcement. Mr. Moya, we appreciate you being here, and Mr. Fox, thank you for the... No worries. Okay, next item on the agenda, Commissioners, is approval of the minutes for the September 19th, 2017 meeting.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the September 19th, 2017 regular meeting. Clear call and roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geico?
Yes.
Chairman Penbro?
Yes. Members of the audience over here, what we're going to do next is call the consent agenda. What we do, we take a bunch of items that we feel the Commissioners are pretty well versed in and understand, kind of speeds up the meeting on routine items and things like that, to put them all together, and we pass them all and we vote. The Commissioner so chooses to have further discussion on one of the items that I'm going to read now. They say, "Chairman, I'd like to pull this," and we would discuss, I'd give that Commissioner opportunity to discuss whatever it was, any concern or comments on that, and then that would be voted separately before the next business item. So that's what a consent agenda does. At this time, I'll read it into the record. Item A is DFA Resolution Number 6, 2017, 18 fiscal year. Resolution requesting to adjust the 2018 fiscal year final budget to creative funds and budget for the 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant for the salary and benefits of the OMA COEEM Coordinator for Taos County and to transfer temporary cash. Item B is the DFA Resolution Number 7, 2017, 18 fiscal year. Resolution requesting to adjust the 2018 fiscal year final Mexico litter control and mutilation grant and to transfer temporary cash. Item C is request for the approval of purchase equipment for the central fire department ending on the amount of $42,000, $15,000 through Artesia Fire Department. Item D is a memorandum of understanding between Taos Pueblo, Taos County, and Taos County Sheriff's Department regarding the registration of convicted sex offenders. Item E, Taos County Contract TCC 2017-111, is a contract between Taos County and GM Emulsion LLC for the labor and materials Baroka Project on Buena Vista Road, County Road B 041 and Cerro, New Mexico. Item F is Taos County Contract TCC 2017-112, which is a contract between Taos County and Northern Mountain Constructors for all labor and materials to construct the Chaniza Road Improvement Project. Item G is a request for approval of a grant agreement for the NDWI Buckle Up 100 Days for Taos County Sheriff's Department. Item H, number, is a resolution, 2017-48, which is a resolution for the Taos County Board of Commissioners in support of deferred action of childhood arrivals, the DACA resolution. Item I is Resolution 2017-49, a resolution supporting the 2018 legislative priorities of the New Mexico Association of County Commissioners. Commissioners, I've read the consent agenda into the record. What is the pledge of the Commissioner?
Second, the Chairman, I don't know if there are people here that would support a doctor, they would want to talk about it.
They want us to pass it, and they're happy that we have it on the agenda and are very pleased with the way we are.[1798.13][1798.13](Applause).
And that is, I won't pass the call. I wasn't able to find D. Yeah, because I can't read it.
That was a call.
Actually, that should have been pulled from the agenda. That wasn't quite ready to be approved in that process.
Okay, so can the motion be amended to remove Item D to be scheduled at a later date? Do you accept that as part of the motion?
Yeah, so I'll move to accept the consent agenda, less Item D, I said.
Later a second.
I'll check in that table.
Motion and a second to pass the consent agenda, removing Item D to be discussed at a later time. Clerk call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geiger?
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes. Next item on the agenda will be Item D, which is a memorandum of understanding between Taos Pueblo, Taos County, and Taos County Sheriff's Department regarding registration of convicted sex offenders. It would be the pledge of the Commissioner, Mr. Cordova, if he would schedule this at the next regular meeting, if you're ready to receive that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I will do our best to get it in the next meeting. There was a few issues that showed up as working out in this. I agree with that conclusion. So we will.
Mr. Commissioner, I hear a motion to set Item D from the consent agenda today to the next regular scheduled meeting, which I believe is October seventeenth, twenty-seventeen.
I'll read that motion, Mr. Chair, regarding Item D, with the hope that Sheriff Ford will be having it working in order prior to that date for the agenda to last. I suggest that staff inform with expanding it to. Okay. Second.
All right, motion and a second to table to a specific date, actually postpone to a specific date for the Item D from our consent agenda to either the next regular meeting or one in the later. Clerk call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geiger?
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes. Okay, Item Nine, Resolutions and Ordinances. This is Resolution Twenty- Seventeen dash fifty-one. Hold it. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Good ones. And keep in touch. Okay, Item Nine is Resolutions and Ordinances. Again, it's Resolution Twenty- Seventeen dash fifty-one. A resolution authorizing and directing publication of the title, general summary, a date, time, and meeting place for discussion, consideration, and action upon proposed ordinance Twenty- Seventeen dash two. This is an ordinance implementing merit system for Taos County, enacting rules for hires, promotion, discharge, and general regulation of county employees, repealing and replacing ordinance Two Thousand Six dash one, Taos County Personnel Policy and all amendments. This is not reading of the ordinance, or comments on the ordinance. This is the publication as existing. Ms. Weber, how are you today?
Good morning, Anna. How are you?
Good.
Thank you. Yes, this is the request from the organization to publish the ordinance notice. This ordinance for merit will repeal and replace Two Thousand Six dash one of Taos amendments. Questions?
So the proposed date?
For our publication is going to be October twelfth, and the adoption request will be scheduled for the Thursday.
Mr. Audio, is everything in compliance?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it is, and it is, should be good to go on that date on the agenda.
Mr. Audio is our attorney, so it's always good to ask him questions, make sure he's made your.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for the attorney or Ms. Weber regarding County Manager authority, six, six, exercising this right to review an individual's salary with other incumbents in comparable positions and salary grades, and to adjust a salary in the interest of parity or equity. And my thought, and then I'd like some feedback, is I think this gives the County Manager exceptional authority. I think it will create a low morale among other employees who, there may be parity, disparity, and they don't get that increase, or if it's done privately and other employees find out, I, there's no mechanism for this to happen. And then in an email, Kyla, there was conflicting information regarding, we can't discuss things in executive session, however, if we bring it out in the public, then that can cause legal issues. So I just like some clarification on this because we do not have a procedure in place for the County Manager to do that, and I really like that.
Commissioner, if you're talking about items particularly in the proposed ordinance, those comments should not be aired prior to the publishing of the ordinance.
Well, when do we make?
At the public hearing.
And then at the public hearing, it's too late. I mean, so I'd like to hear from the camp. I'd just like to hear.
Ms. Weber.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, and Commissioners, the, what can happen is, once it's published, we can enter into a dialogue, you and I, on that. If there are proposed amendments from what's published that we wish to undertake, we can do that. I think that with that particular issue, I think that will be resolved ultimately through the, a resolution that we pass accepting personnel policies. Because it is, and I won't go into detail, but you're right, it has to be fleshed out and the manager can't have unlimited authority, and he won't under this new system.
Okay, 'cause I've been looking at the policies and procedures, there's really no mechanism for procedures. So you're saying those amendments can be made at the public hearing and not today?
Correct, because you can't, we can work on the amendments in between, but we have sufficient time to accomplish that, and then they would be introduced at that time and followed on at that hearing. You can't do it before you have it actually introduced and published. Under the state statutes, the way counties work, municipalities have a little bit more leeway, but we have to get agreement to publish it.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Tricia Blakenhorst.
Hey, Chairman, are you asking for suggested amendments between now and publication? When is, when is the draft going to be published? The reason I ask is because under our prior county attorney, we held fast that, once it's published, there can't be any amendments unless you be published, unless, you know, substantive amendments unless you be published, editor edits and whatnot could be, could be made during the vote here.
Commissioner Blakenhorst, Counselor, I, as you know, we may have different opinions as lawyers sometimes. The way I, the way I've always interpreted that is, as long as the substance of the ordinance itself isn't substantially altered. So in other words, if the notice is, you're going to be undertaking a review of merit system ordinance, and as long as the changes occur within that text, you change percentages or you change things like that, that's all fair game. So I do not believe you have to be published just if you change the particulars, as long as it's within the body and the scope of what's published.
Good, I appreciate that, lots of delight. Thank you.
We're good? Second. I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number Twenty- Seventeen dash fifty-one, which is a resolution authorizing and directing publication of the title, general summary, time and date of meeting place for discussion, consideration, and action on proposed ordinance.
Move to approve? Second.
I have a motion and a second. Clerk call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Geiger?
Yes.
Chairman Fetter?
Yes. All right, thank you, Ms. Weber. Item Ten is Contracts, Agreements, and WUs in Vids. I'd made it's approval of a memorandum of understanding between Taos County and Taos Health Systems DBA Polyfrost Hospital. Also in attendance is Mr. Bill Patton, CEO of Taos Health Systems Doing Business as Polyfrost Hospital. Mr. Cordova.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, basically, the point of the MOA is to be able to provide a mechanism for the flow of the milletty proceeds that we've been collecting on behalf of the hospital for the last almost two years now. What we've come to an tentative agreement on for your approval today is an MOA that basically creates a list of projects, priority list, which isn't attached, however, I do have a copy for you guys to be able to view. And from that list, we will then just have a mechanism for reimbursement that the county or that the hospital will submit to us, their invoices from the work that they've either performed or from the equipment they've purchased that is already on the approved list. We've gone back and forth on a few of the issues, a few of the terms, but I do stand for any questions at this time or any discussion, and I will hand off that over to you.
I understand the board has already reviewed this.
I do believe the THS board has reviewed it. I can turn that over to Mr. Patton for any discussion, if he may.
Because usually if it's R and W, we'd like to see it for. Mr. Patton, how are you?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So the board reviewed this, understanding that it was a draft document, understanding that the Commission needed to see it first. And so the board offered input to the County Manager. Once the Commission approves it, then we'll go back to the board for their final review and approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Donnell.
I'm gonna move that we postpone any decision on this until we have a full review by ECO. And if you, for instance, General Provisions Seven H, I do not understand what that means, and I'm wondering if our attorney could clarify that for us. It is, it states, "To the extent necessary to fulfill the terms of this MOA, the obligations and responsibilities of the parties shall survive the termination of this MOU." You know, so, you know, I'd like to just get some clarification, but I still think we need a little more review from our legal before we.
And Mr. Chairman, as we just mentioned, Kaida Robinson did review this, she drafted it and reviewed it, and I will put it in general order.
Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioners, the, the, I did take a look at that language, and essentially, whenever you're un-timing a relationship, there are certain things that need to keep happening. For example, you don't want the hospital just refusing patients because they're going to, their relationship with us is going to end. You would want their duties under the agreement to continue until the, there's final termination and a new operator is in place. So that's, that's what that is intended to encompass, is that period of time when you are in the process of terminating. Clearly, when there's a new operator, our obligations no longer exist to the old one, and theirs no longer exists to us.
So in relation to some of the ongoing contract violations right now of the PHS, relation to this, is there any bearing on that?
Well, I am not aware of the details of what issues you're discussing, but the main issue will be, undertaking a new contract, it's going, we would have the same opportunity we have now to, to work with them in dissolving those disputes. And if they can't be resolved, then we would have, and we believe they're material breach, then we have the opportunity to terminate the agreement if it's not resolved to our satisfaction, and we believe it's that important. In these relationships, there are many times things that don't go as well as one party or the other would like, but it is the realities of the world. So we would have the opportunity to decide that, whether it's whether to terminate it.
So, Ms., could you make a recommendation whether you should postpone the vote until a brief, a next meeting, or whether you think this document is ready to meet for?
I did, I did review it this morning, and I do not believe there is anything that, nothing jumped out at me as to be problematic. It has all the right provisions for protecting our rights. It has, I like the reimbursement method a lot. That's much better than just giving them a chunk of money and letting them spend it the way they want. So I was, I was pretty happy with the way they agreed with that.
Okay, and then the other question I have for you is, at some point, we were going to put it, put these items out to bid ourselves and save a little money. What happened with that?
So that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, becomes an added burden on the county and creates audit issues, potential audit issues for us. We do not need to be involved in procurement of hospital equipment. They have their private industry, private business that has their own ability to procure items. What we, they feel comfortable doing is, and they actually, as well, and as Mr. Audio mentioned, I think this is above and beyond most counties that filter milletty out to their local hospital, and the hospital boards agreed to give us the list and stick to the list. So, you know, I do feel that this is a big mechanism. We're asking for proof of purchase, which, you know, I goes above and beyond, but then it does not put it into our review of a purchase, so therefore, we don't need to audit these funds. If we would need to do an additional audit of all of these funds, it would probably cost us more, it'd take us longer on our audit, and it would probably expose us to potential problems for the future.
All right, and then, Mr. Patton, could you just give us the first two or three priorities of equipment that you intend to use this milletty for?
So, Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioners, so is this the entirety?
That's your priority list for this year into next year?
So what we've tried to do is to break it down into repairs and maintenance on the building and then medical equipment. So you can see that there are a number of infrastructure items. A number of these are related to life safety code issues, so the emergency department doors and the floor and the operating suite, those are related to the age of the building and the need to get those repairs. And then, within the clinical equipment, you can see issues like defibrillators, software for EKG systems are at the top of the list.
And then, do you do a procurement process to get the lowest possible price, or do you, how do you do that?
So we would have two different mechanisms. One, we have contracts under our general purchasing organization that assures that we get good pricing, but then for pieces of equipment like this, we actually have a company that looks at what other hospitals have purchased and determines whether or not we're getting a good price. So we use both of those mechanisms to make sure we're getting the best price.
And is that the industry standard?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blakenhorst.
Thank you, Chairman. I really appreciate the hospital's transparency here in how you're going to use the taxpayers' money that we authorized to go out to vote. As our manager said, this is a much greater degree of cooperation between the governing body and the entity that's receiving tax funds than is normal. So I really appreciate, I appreciate the work that both hospital and Taos County has done to get this agreement ready. It's very important to utilize those funds that have been entrusted to a very important institution in our community.
Does Steve reference, Chris Steve?
Yes.
You're really cutting it off.
I really am, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. At one point, there was thirty-five thousand dollars somewhere that could have gone to the hospital for building repairs. Whatever happened to that? Was that?
I'll have to look into that a little bit further. It was not necessarily specific for the hospital, but it could have been used on the EMS building as well, and we used some of our money on some repairs that we did to the EMS base. So I'll look into it further, see what the balance is at this point in the board document.
Thank you.
That was leftover money from the previous bond issue that built the hospital. That was leftover money from the previous bond issue that built the hospital in ninety, in the nineties. So that was just money that, for some reason, tax and rent continued to give us a little bits for the twenty years past that week, and, and when tax and rent gives us money, we don't get it back.
So if, if there is some available money, then we could add that to the pool of repairing the building?
Potentially, I think, I would still like to see if there's any additional needs that we would have at the EMS building first, now that they do have a couple million dollars banked from the mill levy. But it all goes to benefit our buildings, and so definitely, however we could put that money into use for the benefit of, of the county buildings, we will.
Mr. Ford?
Commissioner Bagel, Commissioners, the leftover $30,000 that you speak of, Commissioner, was spent to remodel the restrooms in the emergency medical systems building.
Are we talking about expenses?
Yes, we did a full remodel through, through Phoenix Mechanical as a CDS center.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion, any other discussion on this MOU? President, the chairman. Would you approve? I'll second that. The motion and a second to approve the MOU between Taos County and Taos Health Systems. Vice Chair Bagel?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bagel?
Yes.
Chairman Fender?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, students, the next three items are a little unique in meaning. First would be the county manager's report. He kind of told us what he's done since our last meeting, what he's worked on and stuff. And then, the next item would be something that the Commissioners, if we have something that we'd like for him to put on future meetings, and we see the last item on the agenda up there, if we could change that to the second page. Call an executive session. Our meeting is governed under what's called an open meetings act resolution that we pass in the first part of every meeting, and it tells us how we conduct the meeting and what the items are. There's certain exemptions to where we can talk about stuff not in front of you guys, and at the time that that comes in, and the attorney approves it, that's when we would discuss something privately, that asks for personnel or legal actions or things like that. So that's, that's for the rest of this meeting we'll be going. This is our manager, Mr. Ford, and he'll be giving us a report now of things that he has been working on. And then he'll provide a written copy of it for our minutes takers, so when she approves it then, it's easier for her to get the stuff in, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll start with some updates on road projects. El Salto Road is scheduled for this Friday. Of course, all of this weather committee, we did unfortunately get caught with moisture, and it's unfortunate that we weren't able to get these done sooner, but here we are finding the schedule of, of nature, so if there is no further moisture, we hope to do El Salto Road this Friday to get some digging done there. Guayna Road would be next Tuesday, and we also have a meeting scheduled this afternoon to go over the 90% design for Los Cortez Bridge, which is a project that we will be undertaking over the summer. And since, you know, middle school's in the room, the reason we're really pushing that back to summer is Los Cortez is a major school west route. We want to be cognizant of the school's use of that road, and it will be closing that road for an extended amount of time, probably about three months while we do repairs, much, much needed repairs to that Los Cortez Bridge. We'll also be using Cuchilla Road as a detour during that time, so we have to have a little time to prepare Cuchilla Road for the extra traffic that's going to be happening out of that. So we have that meeting today, we will be well along on that project, and that one will be scheduled to work according to the school's schedule, so.
As Commissioner O'Donnell will remind everyone, it's better to get it done right when the weather is, is proper than hurry to get it done not correct.
We try our best every year to beat the weather. We beat it on a few projects this year, but once again, we got kind of caught at the end dealing with moisture. We hope that the snow doesn't come before, but please hit that. The next item I'd like to discuss is the Amalia Senior Center. I came to you guys a few weeks ago to talk about the issues that we had at the senior center and why we had basically shut it down for the short term. We did have a lot of fire safety issues. That was the main reason for shutting it down and allowing the seniors to have their meals there. We're addressing those issues. Mr. Ford and the Facilities Department are moving quickly to address the fire issues. However, there's still a much larger issue that we do need to address as we get people back in the building. We do think we can get people back in the building, but there are some structural issues with that building. The building's only 10 years old, and we already have a four-inch gap of the subgrade on the northeast corner of that building. We've identified some of the potential causes of it, mostly moisture, water's not good for things like that, and we had an issue where we were trying to capture the water, and it wasn't getting the drainage, so we feel that might have been part of the problem. We had a facility builder come and take a look at it with their design team, and they greatly suggested that we look into the original design and the original construction to see if there was any deficiencies potentially at that time. So this is something that might come back later, we'll meet in an executive session if we decide to really look at that. But it does need to be addressed. We do feel we could get people back in the building without addressing the structural immediately, but we can't ignore the structural anymore, and the gap is getting worse. And so it's something that I just wanted the Commission to be aware of. Another point of this is it's an issue that, like many others, comes up in the past. So staff is constantly dealing with things that may be a 10-year-old problem, 15-year-old problem, 20-year-old problem, it's become a recurring problem. So I just want to remind the Commissioners, as hard as we try to work on our priorities that are in front of us, there's always a lot of things that are coming up that we also have to deal with, and may not have been in our plans, but it's something that we certainly have to look back on and address. So that's Amalia Senior Center.
I have a question, Chairman. Vice Chair Bagel, is there a proposal, or is there a potential of using the community center back to provide some kind of food for at least gathering, location, bringing chairs and tables to that? So we, assuming that we've gotten to the point where we can have it be in operation, so through the splinter months we're dealing with, there's not too much to make friends with that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bagel, it's a possibility, but we hope that we can be back into the senior center before we would have to take that step. The community center doesn't have a full operating kitchen that the senior center does. They have a warming room essentially, and we do think that by addressing the fire issues, we could get back in there and start feeding people again and having a, have a place to probably.
Well, I'd like for you to, and say, strongly look at option and, and plan B. I don't think that it's fair that, you know, that building in the back, or whatever, we're usually going to be in there, whether it's just for eating purposes and gathering purposes and nothing other than that, but, you know, it's been an issue. I think that we should, and, you know, hopefully we can expedite it soon possible, but not a little bit of that second option, and try to make that be at least a temporary fix until, you know, we're going to be able to follow any way we can increase, but I think it's important to start with that second.
Understood.
Commissioner Bagel, Commissioners, to, to address the Amalia Senior Center, so we did meet with facility build, and we, it was determined that there are some structural issues with the building, but it is not structurally unsatisfactory, it cannot be, it can be occupied. The reason right now that it is not occupied is due to the fire safety issues that we are steadfastly addressing right now. I have met with a vendor, I'm currently waiting on two more calls. They also have a local contractor, Phoenix Mechanical, that is working with us to try to expedite those repairs. In meeting with Mr. Hadeo and facility build, we have set a goal of making every attempt to get that building back functioning prior to Thanksgiving, so if not sooner. We have staff up in Amalia beginning Monday. We have a sidewalk that connected the senior center to the community center, and what was going on there is drainage, it was damming up there at the sidewalk. We also had some roof drainage due to some saving, we have an other-sized gutter that was very possibly overflowing and dumping drainage off the roof right there at that corner. So today, we will be complete with addressing the gutter issue. We'll be, we have removed a section of the sidewalk and created a swale to get drainage away from the building. We have left the remaining section of sidewalk there to determine what to do with it later. So we are making every attempt to get that building occupied, and this might offset within the next thirty days, we will have that center operational. And then I can work with the manager and looking to expedite, if possible, the kitchen at the community center so we can get that building occupied as well. I'm not too privy as to where it's at right now, but we will do everything we can to get those seniors serviced.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I think that, nothing against the local contractor, but there are contractors available in the northern part of my county that could use work, and Phoenix Mechanical has you on schedule for date November 15, and there's somebody locally that can, he's as competitive, I think that you'd be chucked in the book. It's only for the fact that a lot of times, we wait at contractors that, that we feel comfortable with in doing work, but, you know, they, they hold us back. We have contracts that, that, we have folks that are looking to try to pay, we can state the recipe, because we have contracts with local vendors, but sometimes we end up being a third, it's, it's a small piece. I work a $40,000 project, and they feel like they'll need to expedite staff right away, and there's, there's other companies that, $40,000, $40,000 is a big tip for them, so please consider that when you're doing this with these contractors. They can do it timely or time-sensitive, because it is time-sensitive up there for those communities. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in relation to that?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
So you said it's a 10-year-old building. We don't know if it was structural issues or if it was maintenance issues. I, I don't know who was in charge at that time. I know it wasn't Mr. Flotis, but, you know, this is a concern, that we need to make sure that whoever's in charge does their due diligence. If, if they could have addressed this as soon as they knew there were problems, we might not be going out to a $40,000 bid. So, you know, I don't, I don't expect you to comment on this, but I, I do hope in the future that whoever, I know Mr. Flotis is now back in charge of these buildings, but I don't know who was in the past, and I don't know if it's just somebody wasn't paying attention or not.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we're looking into the issue of that. I don't think it's a maintenance issue, it doesn't really appear to be structural, however, we also got to remember, we didn't have, the county built the building for Ancianos ten years ago. Ancianos controlled the building until three years ago. Upon the county taking back over responsibility, Mr. Flotis and the Facilities Department have been aware of this issue, they brought it to my attention way back then, and we've only seen it get worse. So I really want to indicate lack of maintenance being the main primary issue, it really does appear to be a structural problem, so.
I understand.
And I do commend the Facilities Department for all the work they do on our buildings. We've come a long way in the last few years in improving things, because in prior, we didn't really have the budget. They did, they made the best of what they could with what they had, and we're continuing to make improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As your facilities director, I do feel that I hold some responsibility in maybe possibly, you know, maybe not catching the sidewalk that created that dam and some minor issues that may have been overlooked, but all in all, it was the design of the building, this contract to put this sidewalk in and spend government funds, which, you know, we can't just go in and eliminate something that taxpayers spent money on without reason and justification. This has been a problem, it's, it's, has started to snowball, and we have taken the correct steps to, to start rectifying it this week, and I'm, we're hoping it's not going to get any worse. There is some stuff that needs to be corrected, but at this point in time, I can say that we have addressed the drainage issues, and so we will monitor the situation there with the setting of the building, and if it continues to get worse, then we will speed up to, to get the correct services, engineers, and so forth to aid us in rectifying it.
And Mr. Chairman, let me make it clear, I have no way of singling out facilities. They do an excellent job. I just, you know, what happens in the past, we've just got to make sure it doesn't happen again.
No, it's fine. Go ahead, Mr. Ford.
Thank you. Another update on heard, as I updated last time, we did receive the deed, we were prepared to accept that each day of resolution when an error was caught. They referenced the wrong highway, the wrong US highway, so instead of referencing US 68, they referenced US 64. That's been brought to their attention, they did correct that paperwork, and it's leading for us to sign it. So by the next meeting, I do hope to be accepting the heard deed by resolution. An update on our presentation to the New Mexico Legislative Transportation Infrastructure Committee. First of all, I definitely want to thank Mr. Hadeo and Mr. Pacheco. They did an excellent job of representing the county. In San Antonio, last Friday, we put together a presentation for the committee, and, you know, I think it went over pretty well. It's always hard to address one of these committees as the last item on the agenda on a Friday afternoon, but we did our best, and I, I do appreciate the hard work of Mr. Hadeo and Mr. Pacheco, and I think they're well aware of the challenges we face as a county, and I think that was the point of our presentation, was to bring to light a lot of the challenges a small county faces and how we can better work with DOT. So I felt it was a successful presentation, and anytime we have that opportunity, I will try and take that, because I do think it provides a positive light to Taos County, so.
I do have a question about that, and I want to thank you, because I think I asked you to make comments about like the rest area and the sign problems, so I appreciate you making those comments. Did they say anything about vendors issue out there, or anything related to the rest area?
No, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, like I said, it was more about what county issues we're facing, what challenges the counties are facing. That's a DOT project, and we all know that as much as it, as, it's a good project, you know that we're working hard on it, but it still isn't a county project. It's a DOT project, and we certainly appreciate the support for it, but we tried to focus our efforts that day on issues the counties are facing. So we, we brought it up, but that wasn't the point of the, the presentation, so it wasn't the cutting topic. But we continue to advocate for it, we continue to answer questions that we get from the secretary or deputy secretary, I get emails constantly with questions, and we do our best to answer those, but as I mentioned, as a county, we have our own challenges, and we're really focusing on what the counties focus on, so that didn't really come up.
County was a whole.
Yeah, county was a whole. Last meeting as well, my manager's report, I mentioned that I was looking forward with a contract for a PIO PR individual. That contract's complete. Mr. Steve Fulandorf is on board with us. He has an email, that's PIO@taoscounty.org, so if any of the Commissioners have anything that they would like to, you know, address right now, please send an email to that or please forward it to that email. Myself and Mr. Hadeo also will receive anything so that we're all in the group, but that's my big request, is any requests for the Commissioners, please make sure management is also aware of it so that we're all on the same page. So that is a big help for us. We're already working on a lot of little things. We will do our best about getting better communication out to the public, especially with road projects, especially with any inconvenience that we may create. We want to give as much feedback as possible, and Mr. Fulandorf's really going to help us with that. We're also asking them, asking them to do a couple positive pieces for the county. That's not one of my strong suits, as your manager, to really pat everyone on the back, but we have an amazing team here at the county, and we've accomplished quite a bit over the last few years, in my opinion. I don't think we've done a good job of getting the public to see all the things that have been accomplished, so please go help us on some of that. Really, public safety is a big thing that I want to point out. We've done a lot in public safety over the last three years, and it's hard to notice it until it's not there. So the fact that there's less complaints is the way I know it's working, and we need to kind of get that out to the public, because things are just working there. Since we brought on dispatch, that's what, we have better communication in the county than we ever have. It's not perfect, but it's come a long way. And Northern Taos County, we can all pretty much talk to you and listen to you most of the time, and when there's a concern, we address it as quickly as possible to make sure that we can get that communication, so.
Commissioner Blakenhart?
Chairman, the additional communication that will mostly be on the website, and Mr. Fulandorf's communications about some of the positive things that we're doing, would that also be on the website, or would there be a different thing?
Definitely website, and that's another point I'll get to next, but yeah, whatever it means, we can get a good word out, we'll do that. You know, we'll take advantage of any possibility of being an article in the paper, if the Taos News wants to pick up a positive piece, more than happy to read a positive piece in the Taos News, so. But whatever it takes to get out there, we're also going to try and increase our social media presence, but do it very responsibly, and make sure that we are, you know, just focusing on the work we do as a county, as a county government, so. And moving on, my next update then, there's no other questions, is website. We did have a meeting just this week of our web's internal website team, Mr. Merina, our MIA. Um, Mr. Hirdmanina, our AMIAS director, has been working on this for many months, and he's now at the point where he is gathering input from all of the end users. Um, he's chosen a vendor. We are moving forward with the new website design while we also improve the current website and been able to at least upload things and get information up there. And we've asked our team to spread the word to look at our pages individually and see what's there, if it's outdated, if it's updated. So for the short term, we have what we have. We all agree in our meeting that it's not the best website, and I think everybody can agree to that. It certainly lacks quite a bit, so we'll make do with what we have until we roll out the new website. But we're getting to the point where, and of course, any requests from the commission, we send it to myself, send it to Mr. Manina, and we'll take that into consideration. But what we've heard is just more useful. It needs to be more useful. And I definitely see the website as our number one tool for the future to create more efficiency. I think if the public has the ability, asks for most of their questions online, it saves taxpayer time and taxpayer money and staff time. And that's ultimately our goal is to build a focus on our day-to-day and not have to be answering the same question over and over when the answer could be put on the website. So we're being important.
Vice Chair, Diego's, um, idea of incorporating the citizen interaction software.
That was exactly, that was definitely a point that was brought up. Mr. Jardimio has also continued pounding on that we should have the ability, the ability for taxpayers to report issues, but not just report them, build a tracking so that they can all go back and say, hey, well, where is it at? So that we are held accountable as management and as staff to answer that response. And to respond to that and give them a timeline as to how we're addressing it. So definitely an important factor. Something else that I've seen from the Lee County manager lately, he's been doing weekly video updates. Basically, this manager's report on a video posted on the website for not just the commission to hear, but for all the public to hear. So that's something I think might be an initiative for us if we have that ability. Um, he may not want to see me, but he may want to hear what I have to say. So...
And I just appreciate that.
We need two cameras to get their comms.
And Mr. Chairman, I have an announcement, so I have more, an update on the website, et cetera. Um, I do appreciate that rollout of the new website eventually, and also the open data portal with these documents or the format that people can use, not because it's very difficult to use formats in PDF. So I think, um, FOD will be contacting you as far as to explain why the Obama administration recommends that kind of format rather than a PDF. And I do look forward to a time when, um, the commission can sit down and give priorities. We need to put the minutes up there. We need to put documents, permits, resolutions. So like you said, we do not have this constant request for HIPAA.
Understood. I do think we have a pretty good idea of the requests, so we're going to continue forward. Um, the next item I'd like to discuss is an issue, a meeting we had earlier in a week with the staff from Envoya de Los Grancho's Water Sanitation District and a contractor that they're using for some work that they're performing. Uh, they really, um... They're in a, they have budget constraints just like us. And, you know, as Envoya does a lot of these projects, they'll continue to do their projects. They have a four-year plan. And so they approached us with the request to unify road cut permits. Essentially, instead of doing multiple individual permits, they asked us if we would work with them on a road they're doing right now in order to be able to accomplish that with a little less money into the bond. And so we're trying to work with them. We're definitely doing our best to collaborate. And they did give us a lot of assurance that this would be done well. So we did sign an agreement with Envoya to allow, um, this road to be done over the next few months, and there will be a 12-month guarantee, just like with any other road cut permit. Um, they will be having their staff on-site to monitor the project. We are, the vendor or the contractor, Sola, is actually, and they also, um, are going to do their best to make sure that there are no issues because they are on the hook if there are issues down the road. So they understand that if it's not done right the first time, they will be coming back to do it right for the people. So it is something that, um, we're trying to collaborate with, and I hope that it all works out, at least aren't exposed. The risk is still minimized. However, we're getting more and more requests from these kinds of entities, sister entities. Even Kit Carson has come to us with a request to look at these ordinances. So Mr. Jardimio and myself have agreed that we need to look at these ordinances and see what we need to do to update them, to be more friendly to our sister agencies that are just as, also like us, trying to get projects done, trying to make things done for the people of Taos County. And we need to be able to work with them and have a little bit of faith with, while still making sure that we're covering our risks. So that's basically the end result of this meeting, this week with Envoya de Los Grancho's. Any questions about that? Uh, New Mexico Gas Company did put forth an MOU for the county and the Taos County Sheriff's Office. I did sign this MOU, it didn't come before the commission, and I'm not letting you know what it is. It's essentially something similar to what we approved on the consent agenda, allowing for overtime. New Mexico Gas Company is willing to pay overtime to our sheriff's officers for patrolling the area of the construction. And, um, it's within the purview of the manager at ETC. It is an opportunity to get money for overtime from a different source. And I do feel it's important that, and he started, sheriff's deputies are patrolling that area. I've seen an increased patrol from state police as well, but I think it's just important that there is a police presence during that construction for everybody involved, including us driving through it, but most especially for the workers that are exposed to the danger. So that was Ben Stein.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in relation to the gas company, did you see the legal notice about discharge of 78,000 gallons into the underground when they test the pipeline? And I'd like Mr. Cordova to get on that email list, uh, so we're notified. Uh, if you look at the last week's Taos News, it had, uh, if you want to be on the list or be able to make input, um, on that discharge, I'd like to be included in that. And if you could, please, on behalf of the commission, uh, sign us up for, um, notification.
We'll get that done. Moving for the second worst project that they've ever done in their life. All right.
Moving on to the next topic, um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, you may have spread the letter. I, um, wrote for the state auditor. I was able to have delivered that letter last Friday before we presented to the legislative committee. And I had a brief discussion with the deputy state auditor. I mean, it went pretty well. I think I was able to better articulate what we're trying to achieve. It turns out that auditor, the state auditor is actually auditing tax revenue right now. We were able to get in right at the end of this audit. It's, there is a potential they can do a little extra work to look at our issue. And so they totally understood the issue. We're definitely not the only local government that has come to them. Um, we've only probably helped reinforce what they have already been told by so many other municipalities and counties. And, um, we were focused on GRT, but they actually had some good questions in regards to property tax as well. And, uh, I was able to give an example of the multi-court mine and how that actually became, when we picked that up on the county records, we had a higher value for it than the state was assessing it when it was a fully productional mine. And so that was intriguing to the deputy state auditor that, um, we're basically, the state was giving money on the table for many, many years by not properly assessing the mine when it was in full production. And that happened here in Taos County. It's probably likely it's happening around the state. So just wanted to mention that after that conversation with them, it was a good conversation. I felt like we got our point across, and, um, thank you for, um, Commissioner Diego's expecting me to do that, and I think it was a good idea for us to do that. So thank you. Uh, we also, I also had a lunch meeting a couple of weeks ago with the US Forest Service's forest supervisor, um, basically talking about collaborative programs and ways that the county and the forest service can work together. Uh, he was very grateful to have some time with management so that we could really work out the logistics of things and how we can start working together more closely. A lot of their initiatives are similar to ours, and there is funding from the feds that can flow to us once we have a path for it to flow. And so we're really working on that now, and I was grateful for that meeting. So I just wanted to mention that. And, um, the same day that we had Facility Build come look at the Amaya Senior Center, they did a quick site visit of our new senior building we have across the street. And so they're getting started on that. We will be moving forward with Facility Build in order to be able to complete that project in the short timeframe we have. We're very confident that we can, and we're excited. I'm very excited to get that project underway, I believe, I do think, by end of June 2019. It should be pretty. I had promised you at the last meeting a report from the RTC. However, moving the meeting from Tuesday to Thursday affected that schedule, so I hope that we will have that in the next meeting. So I was not able to get that to you today, that's a problem. And that's about all I have right now. I stopped for any questions, and there may be a few things I missed. It's always a very busy two weeks between meetings, but I hope I captured most of what I was able to do over the last two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Vice Chair, the RTC, we're moving along with that. Are we, who's kind of spearheading that from the process?
Um, initially, it was Lieutenant Andrew McCalla from the Juvenile Protection Center who really came up with the idea and who really kind of put the idea out there, presented it. Since then, he's been working closely with Tati Jardimio and our Healthcare Assistance Fund, and of course, um, they're bringing it to management. So, um, now that it's time to include others, we'll include others as necessary. It looks like if we get approval for some design changes inside the facility, we'll have to move into that next connection. So keep on involving staff as needed and working forward.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have some other... Uh, when are you bringing us the NAC documentation, thank you letter in the county?
Oh, I thought that also wasn't able to be done. Davis Aronisa was out, had previously requested time off for today, so we weren't able to get that done this meeting. I do hope to have it right next week. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Any word on that assistance, any luck with the assistance for that family in Penasco that you'd like to provide?
Um, once again, not a county issue, but I have not heard back. I also have been reaching out. I've done some more personal stuff. I don't really want to waste our time here. That's county time, but I, you know, I personally am just as interested in that as you, Commissioner. I will continue to follow up. It's not a county issue, so I'll try to continue to do that.
And how's that setup going for the loan program?
We have completed the paperwork. We now need to do, uh, implementation kind of training for everybody, and we're working on scheduling that.
Excellent. And then, could you please consider if we've got funds for Cuchia Road in Penasco? I know you've got one invested, you've got all these other road projects. Um, but I really, I think we talked about Cuchia Road, that we do a little repaving, paving where they had to get into, Mutual had to fix a water line. Um, so if, if, I would really like to see some kind of project up there. So could you please look into that?
Definitely, understood. As the allocation for each district, your allocation has been fully expanded on their roads, so that would probably be a project that'll have to be in the subject. All the projects that we're doing now, we're all within the allocations for each district. So we'll definitely get that for a future project, putting the warnings up there.
I'd still like to get in 2019. And I did one comment. I was hearing about, that it might be helpful in the future, you're engineering this Los Cortolas Bridge specifically, but I've heard that sometimes if you get a consortium of engineers, you get engineers to design a number of bridges so they're shovel-ready, that we might be able to save more money that way rather than one at a time. So if you could look at that, you know, is WH, uh, engineering these bridges for us? That if we gave them a list of the top five bridges, which I don't know what they are?
Sure, Commissioner, that's exactly what we've done. Exactly what we've done, and we started with the most pressing, necessary bridge. Either way, it's not cheap. We can get a little bit of an efficiency having one engineer doing all, and we're probably experiencing that efficiency. But each bridge to engineer costs a lot more than the road. So we're already looking at probably twice the engineering cost, a lot more just on the bridge as opposed to Los Cortolas Road, which was a complete design build as well. So we're definitely looking at those efficiencies. We always do, we always do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, we'll leave that to item 12, Commissioner reports and matters. Any new business to be considered at a future meeting that you'd like to see on the next agenda or on a subsequent agenda? Doing none, Commissioner's announcements, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I did want to say I attended the FOD awards luncheon in Albuquerque yesterday. Uh, Taos County's name was mentioned twice, um, in, along with Las Cruces, who's working on redesigned websites for open transparency. So they did bring us up twice. Uh, I was recognized along with other elected officials who were there, including the Attorney General, um, the State Treasurer, Land Commissioner, Senator Michael Padilla. Um, so, yeah, it was nice to be recognized that we are working on transparency in our website. As I said, it will save time with HIPAA requests. So it was very nice to be recognized and be invited to FOD, which is Foundation for Open Government. Uh, the awards they gave were awarded to journalists who saw violations in the open HIPAA requests, took them to various municipalities and governments to court and received large settlements because they did not adhere to HIPAA requests. Uh, so it was kind of nice. Uh, one of the awardees dealt with mental health, state mental health facilities. Um, and they were successful in a lawsuit. And also someone from Las Cruces who, uh, wanted records from animal control. And they did not give them. They took them to court, and they also received a settlement. So a very, very interesting luncheon.
Thank you.
And please do come see the exhibit at the county courthouse, the mural that's at the first floor at the historic courthouse, exhibit of inmate art, and that will hang till this Sunday. So if you haven't had a chance to go in, please check it out. It's a great exhibit.
Thank you. Uh, my only announcement is due to a multi-line board meeting and retreat, an amplifier I want to be at the next meeting, um, maybe the 17th. So that will be our first meeting, hopefully live on the new software. Uh, so we're trying to keep that to a minimal meeting so the girls can use it as a training exercise. So we're hoping that it will be abbreviated meetings so that they can hang of sending out the first one on that. There's other information pressing. We can always have a special meeting later, but, um... So I ask for respective commissioners to staff's training and responsibilities within your side. Okay, I would, our next item is the executive session. As I explained to the students earlier, that at this time before, so they can leave before we go into executive session, I would ask for a five-minute break, commissioners?
Take a motion for a five-minute break. Sergeant.
Got a motion and a second for a five-minute break, and we will reconvene with item 13 afterwards. Mr. Graham, we thank you for everybody being here, the attention they gave us. We hope we didn't bore the tech out of them, but, uh, you guys are welcome to come back at any time. Um, if there's questions about the meeting and the process that went on today, give me a holler, and I can go talk to the class.
Mr. Jardimio, I was, uh, so I would like to picture the commission.
All right. Good. So quick call and roll on the motion.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blinken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Diego?
Yes.
Chairman Becker?
Yes.
Okay, motion to come back into session from our break. So move.
Send.
Motion, a second, quick call and roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blinken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Diego?
Yes.
Chairman Becker?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is executive session. Taos County Board of Commissioners make convene in closed session for the purpose of the performance evaluation process beginning regarding our county managers. This matter can be discussed in closed session under a meeting back for exemption, 10-15-1H2, which allows for discussion of limited personal matters. Mr. Audio, is it your recommendation that we go maybe closed session at this time?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
And commissioners, I'm asking Mr. Rene Weber, our HR Director, to be part of the process for any questions or anything that the commissioners may have. So I need a motion to go into closed session under the exemption, um, 10-15-1H2. So move.
Thank you.
Circus.
And then, Mr. Chairman, will Mr. Audio be present?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification, Commissioner. Cordova.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenrohr?
Yes.
Vice Chair Diego?
Yes.
Chairman Danner?
Yes.
Wood in hand. Motion to come back into open session. So move. Second. Cordova.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenrohr?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Diego?
Yes.
Chairman Danner?
Yes. Mr. Audio, would you give a report to be in compliance with the open meetings act exemption as to the content of the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, we went into closed session to discuss personnel matters as noticed on the agenda. And that's all that was discussed, and there was no action taken.
All right, motion for the commission to accept Mr. Audio's report. So move. Second. Cordova.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenrohr?
Yes.
Vice Chair Diego?
Yes.
Chairman Danner?
Yes.